The meeting will please come to order. I'd like to thank everyone for joining us this evening. Today is Thursday, June the 17th. This is our official City Council meeting. Again, I just want to thank everyone who was joining us via Zoom or on Channel 22. Just a friendly reminder that for public comments, there is a Google sign up link in the chat for anyone who would like to speak. And public comment will take place after non legislative business. At this time, we will have the opening prayer from Akira Granado.
Heavenly Father, we have assembled to handle the affairs of our city. As we do so, we ask for your guidance and understanding. We pray that our city reaches a place of peace and safety. Keep us out of harm's way and bless those who are in authority. Let respect be key in all our endeavors. Amen.
Amen. At this time, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance. Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Gray.
Present.
Councilwoman Darby. Councilwoman Darby. Councilwoman Oliver.
Present.
Councilwoman Harley.
Councilwoman Harley did ask to be excused.
Thank you. Councilwoman Fields.
Present.
Councilwoman McCoy.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Field. Councilwoman Cabrera.
Present.
Councilwoman Dixon.
Present.
Councilman Spadola.
Present.
Councilwoman Walsh.
Here.
One more time, Councilwoman Darby. President Congo.
Here.
Eleven present and two absent.
At this time, we had the reading of the previous, reading of the minutes of the previous meeting.
June 3rd, 2021, the council met in virtual regular session above date at 6:30 PM. President Ernest M. Congo, the second president. The opening prayer was done by Akira Granado, Deputy City Clerk. The Pledge of Allegiance was recited by City Council.
I move the minutes be accepted as written.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that the minutes be accepted as written on the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. At this time, we have committee reports.
May 12th, 2021, President Members of Council City Wilmington, ladies and gentlemen, we are Education, Family Services Committee by virtual meeting to whom was referred ordinance number 21025 entitled, in order to authorize and approve an educational access agreement contract between 009 season protest between the City of Wilmington and the Red Plate Consolidated School District. I've given this ordinance careful study and recommend Council would on it accordingly. Respectfully submitted, those members present, Councilwoman McCoy, Councilwoman Gray, Councilwoman Darby, Councilwoman Field, Councilwoman Oliver, and President Congo.
I move that those minutes be received, recorded, and filed.
Second.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that those minutes be received, recorded, and filed on the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry.
June 7th, 2021, we your Finance and Economic Development Committee by virtual meeting to whom was referred ordinance number 21033 entitled, in order to amend chapters 2, 39, and 40 of the city code to change the position of city physician to city medical provider. I've given this ordinance careful study and recommend Council would on it accordingly. Respectfully submitted, those members present, Councilman Johnson, Councilwoman Harley, Councilman Field, Councilwoman Oliver, Councilman Spadola, President Congo, and absent Councilwoman Walsh.
I move for the committee report to be received, recorded, and filed.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that the committee reports be received, recorded, and filed on the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry.
June 7th, 2021, we your Finance and Economic Development Committee by virtual meeting to whom was referred ordinance number 21025 entitled, in order to authorize and approve an agreement contract 22017 H R P S between the City of Wilmington and Jackie Jo Lendo D P N, A P R N, and F M P C for medical provider services. I've given this ordinance careful study and recommend Council would on it accordingly. Respectfully submitted, those members present, Councilman Johnson, Councilwoman Harley, Councilman Field, Councilwoman Oliver, Councilman Spadola, President Congo, absent, Councilwoman Walsh.
I move for the committee report to be received, recorded, and filed.
Second.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that the committee report be received, recorded, and filed on the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carry. Clerk, can you circle back to, I would like to recognize Councilwoman Shanae Darby.
Absolutely. So noted, President Congo. Is she on?
Yes.
Are we recognizing her present now?
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. June 10th, 2021, we your Community Development Urban Planning Committee by virtual meeting to whom was referred substitute number two to ordinance number 21008 entitled, in order to amend chapter five of the city code to require detailed owner information on applications for a business license to operate a residential rental property. I've given this substitute ordinance careful study and recommend Council would on it accordingly. Respectfully submitted, those members present, Councilwoman Cabrera, Councilman Field, Councilwoman McCoy, Councilwoman Fields, Councilman Spadola, Councilwoman Darby, and President Congo.
I move the committee report be received, recorded, and filed.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that the committee report be received, recorded, and filed on the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry.
June 10th, 2021, we your Community Development Urban Planning Committee by virtual meeting to whom was referred ordinance number 21035 entitled, in order to amend chapter 34 of the city code to revise the timing of appeals related to rental dwellings. I've given this ordinance careful study and recommend Council would on it accordingly. Respectfully submitted, those members present, Councilwoman Cabrera, Councilman Field, Councilwoman McCoy, Councilwoman Fields, Councilman Spadola, Councilwoman Darby, and President Congo. Need a motion.
I move the committee report be received, recorded, and filed.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that the committee report be received, recorded, and filed on the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. At this time, we'll have the City Treasurer's Report.
June 17th, 2021. Total investment, four hundred and ninety million, five hundred and seventy-four thousand, twenty dollars and ninety cents total cash on hand, sixteen million, six hundred and fifteen thousand, seventy-three dollars and fifty-one cents. Grand total, five hundred and seven million, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, ninety-four dollars and fifty cents to Wayne's Bank Treasurer.
I move the Treasurer's Report be received, recorded, and filed.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that the Treasurer's Report be received, recorded, and filed on the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. This time, I'll accept the motion to accept all non legislative business.
Still move.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to accept all non legislative business on the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Councilwoman Gray, do you have any non legislative resolutions?
No, not this evening, but I would like to send out my sympathies to the Linda Smith family for her death. And I think all of council will join me. Pardon me?
We are preparing a resolution from all of council.
Okay, thank you. There's nothing this evening, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Darby. Any non legislative resolutions this evening? Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes, Mr. President, I do have two resolutions this evening. First, I would like to recognize Pride Month, and I think we have Mr. Dustin on the line. When do you see Mr. Dustin's name up?
Yes, he.
Okay, just want to make sure I don't like to, I'm not going, I don't recognize people that's not here. It wouldn't do me any good. First, I'd like to give kudos to Councilwoman Walsh, who has in the past always recognized Pride Month. Someone looked it up and they said it hadn't been done in a long time. So I'd like to thank Chris Johnson, individual I was honoring in the 3rd district, wasn't able to make it tonight. So at the last minute, Chris did tell me he had someone in his district and he told me it was okay to honor them. And this would be from Crimson Moon, the L B G. They have a bar on the west side and it's brand new. So with that being said, sponsors is Chris Johnson and myself, and I say all City Council really. Whereas Wilmington City Council wishes to recognize the purpose of the Pride Month as a time to celebrate our lesbian, gay, bisexual, trans, transgender, queen, L B, LGBTQ community with the purpose of raising awareness and to encourage dialogue to promote healthy and self, and self, and safe communities. Whereas June marks the annual anniversary of the first Pride Parade, which came one year after 1969 Stonewall applies. Six nights of riots spurred when LGBTQ plus people resisted police harassment, brutality, and early morning bar riots. The struggle for acceptance, simple human dignity under the law of LGBTQ people is evident by all who work and create in society. Whereas Crimson Moon is a unique, all exclusive space for LGBTQ community. It is a tavern with a video bar, dance club. More importantly, it is gay safe and only LGBTQ plus tavern in Wilmington. A place where anyone is welcome to be free and be themselves. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council, City of Wilmington, that this council recognize Crimson Moon for the role they play in uplifting the LGBTQ plus community in June as Pride Month and urge all to respect and honor our diverse, diverse community and to build a culture of inclusion equity during LGBTQ Pride Month and throughout the entire year. Okay, Mr. Dustin, you have about three minutes to say something. What would you like to say?
All right, we're so happy to be here. My name is Sandro Negron, and I also go by Latanga Manches. I am the Entertainment Director here at Crimson Moon, as well as our Miss Crimson Moon 2019.
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman, and I'm Dustin Mishro, Social Media and Event Coordinator here at Crimson Moon. Crimson Moon Tavern has been the only LGBTQ plus social space for the past 10 years in Newcastle County. We are, we are humbled to accept this resolution, not only on behalf of Crimson Moon, but on behalf of the entire LGBTQ plus community of Wilmington and Newcastle County.
As you know, the COVID-19 pandemic impacted small businesses severely, and here at Crimson Moon, we are one of the smallest. We were forced to close for a majority of 2020, if not for the love and support of our community, both LGBTQ plus and allies alike, coming together to raise funds to keep this space open and our doors open to our community, we would not have made it. We need to thank our owner, Donald Bischoff, for providing us with this space and the entire city and surrounding area with this space for us to thrive. And we hope to serve generations of LGBTQ plus and allies, starting tomorrow with our Fresh Face Friday show and for years to come, and those who have yet to join our community.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Would you give out your exact address, please?
Yes, we are located at West.
West Sixth Street, 1909 West Sixth Street.
I really appreciate you guys coming on. I really appreciate everything y'all doing to bring awareness. Would anyone else on council like to say a few words?
Yes. Oh, yes, I just wanted to say thank you very much. Because you are one of the, add to the color and vibrancy of the west side, and I appreciate all the work you guys do. And I know the Wilmington Strong Fund that was able to help supplement funds, I know was very important to your organization. Working with groups like West Side Crows and the City of Wilmington. So we're so proud of you all that you were able to come through and make sure the doors are open. I look forward to coming and seeing the revamped shows as one of your famous, one of our famous actors, Troy is actually a neighbor of mine. So, so, so I, so I know you all quite well. So I'm looking forward to seeing the shows and thank you for adding to the vibrant atmosphere and in the revitalization of Union Street. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you all so much. Happy Pride.
Councilwoman Cabrera.
Yes, I just wanted to say congratulations again, and this is a really great establishment for all. It's very welcoming to everyone. They have a beautiful deck upstairs on the back and, you know, sometimes I forget that they're there, but now that things are opened back up again, we certainly could go and visit and just enjoy all the festivities, and they have shows and performances, music. So I just want to congratulate you for all the work that you're doing. And it's just a nice, vibrant place and location, and just providing safe places for people to go and have a good time from the LGBTQ community. And of course, the straight community is also welcome. That's what I love, that you're so welcoming of everyone. So yeah, you know, council members will have to go pay a visit. Congratulations again, and Happy Pride Month.
We look forward to seeing you.
Jerith, thanks.
Yes, definitely. Happy Pride Month. I've actually been there before. I had a great time. Councilwoman Cabrera mentioned is, you guys welcome everyone. So look forward to the next time we can go and just have another, another fabulous night on the town. Just a lot of fun.
Doors are open to you.
Yeah, the atmosphere is awesome. So it's just definitely someplace that everyone in Wilmington should visit.
Thank you so much.
Any other council members? I don't see any other.
Thank you. I thank y'all for coming again.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for that. Mr. President, I have one more.
Okay.
Do we have, we should have Dr. Sandra on the, on the line and Dr. Priscilla. When did you see Dr. Gibson on the line with Dr. Priscilla? The pastor.
I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Just like to make sure whoever I'm honoring here.
I'm here as well.
Okay, thank you. Well, let me get started. Dr. Coker on the line? No problem. Okay, well, we have two out of three. Okay, I'm ready. Sponsors, Councilwoman Xanthe Oliver. This would be for Trauma Month, which was last month, but we got so busy last month, I was unable to put it on the agenda. So I told them I'd just wait to put it on agenda this month. So whereas, whereas the sensitive city, city council to honor individuals who have demonstrated outstanding achievement and deserving of recognition to acknowledge and acknowledgement. Whereas people, whereas people of all ages, races, social economic status are like to, likely to experience trauma at some point in their lives. According to Trauma Matters Delaware, trauma has been associated with violence, natural disaster, personal losses, and other life-changing events. Although an individual experiences of trauma is unique, exposed, exposure to trauma is related to high risk of mental health problems across life. Okay, I'm not going to mention Coker. Whereas Priscilla, Dr. Priscilla, my past, past, M D F A A P, completed her pediatrician residential at University of Maryland Children's Hospital with a certificate in advocate and serves as a national, she serves as a National Vice President of Student National Medicaid Medical Association and the Future Leadership Project that rocked her. And working to become a leader in the healthcare delivery and advocates for medical underserved pediatrician population. And whereas Dr. Sandra Gibson, M D, shares over 27 years of experience and a medical doctor who completed her studies at Sydney Kimble Medical College at Thomas Jefferson University. Dr. Sandra is a member of the Behavioral Health Consortium and specializes in emergency medicine, internal medicine, sports medicine, family medicine, and she is trained to make urgent life-saving decisions in the ER and treating the broad range of illness. Now there be a resolve by the council in the City of Wilmington, that the council is pleased to commend Dr. Coker, Dr. Sandra, Dr. Priscilla, for their outstanding commitment and dedication, dedicated service that they provide in our community. Would someone like to, one of you, whoever would like to start first? You have three minutes.
I can begin.
Sandy?
Yes, ma'am. President Congo, council members, and in particular, Councilwoman Oliver. It is a particularly special honor for me to receive this honor from Councilwoman Oliver. You all should know that Councilwoman Oliver, along with the Lieutenant Governor, has accompanied me on the community streets many times for Narcan distribution, handing out harm reduction materials, getting folks access to mental health services, and many times to combat the opioid epidemic. And then when COVID infected our city and our community, Councilwoman Oliver, as well as Lieutenant Governor, joined me on the streets to do COVID testing at no less than 50 events. And then we identified very vulnerable individuals that needed housing during the epidemic. We eventually moved to vaccinating the most vulnerable and understaffed areas and have been out since that time somewhere around two to three times a week. It has taken a team approach to carry off these events, and I do want to recognize the members of my team, which include not only Councilwoman Oliver, but Lieutenant Governor Bethany Hall Long, Annie Coons, the wife of our Senator Chris Coons, Lisa Goodman, a prominent lawyer in the community, and my husband Rick Shooter, and the doctors, nurses, and techs from New York Urgent Care where I currently practice. So it was a great honor to receive this from a community leader such as Xanthe Oliver. And I stand humbled, and Dr. Posses and Dr. Coker truly humble me in their service to the community. And they have stood up among the leadership and done the work. So I share this honor and I thank you.
Thank you so much. You keep doing a good job. Is Dr. Possy available to speak safely words?
Yes, thank you so much, Councilwoman Oliver, for this opportunity to speak. Again, President Congo, Councilwoman Oliver, all council persons, thank you so much for this recognition and the opportunity to speak to you all today. Just following the remarks of Dr. Gibson, as she mentioned, when COVID hit the state of Delaware, hit our country, many healthcare providers, the community really mobilized to ensure the health and wellness of Delawareans. And so, you know, I actually had the opportunity to first meet Councilman Oliver about two months ago at a community vaccine event that Henry D. Johnson was hosting. So I've come to Delaware as a new pediatrician and public health manager for Henry D. Johnson, which serves one of our most vulnerable zip codes. And what I really recognized there is that not only health professionals that were coming together, but our elected officials, our educators in our community to really ensure health and wellness. And when we think about trauma, COVID really impacted us in so many ways. But I've been so encouraged to see how many of us have come together to be intentionable and actionable to ensure that we can move forward. So where Dr. Gibson, Dr. Coker, and I accept this on behalf of the resolution from Councilman Oliver, I really think it's important to just recognize how the community has really come together to really ensure that we're taking care of us during this time of trauma and making sure that we're being mindful of mental health and wellness. And so I especially, since Dr. Coker was not able to join, I wanted to acknowledge her, her efforts in the National Medical Association, which is an organization that represents black physicians in the country. I have the pleasure of serving as the region chair, and so I worked very closely with Dr. Coker, Dr. Scannell Berry, and many of our other African-American physicians in the country. So I certainly hope that we can continue to be collaborative as we think about not only mental health, but physical health, how we're bringing Delawareans back to primary care, and I look forward to working all with you as I continue to be at Henry D. Johnson and connect with you. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you again, Dr. Mason. I really appreciate that. And Dr. Gibson, and I know the Lieutenant Governor is on here, and I'd like to thank her for her outreach and the work she does. If anyone else would like to say a few words, because I know we have a long agenda. Okay, if not, thank you both, and you have a good evening. And with that being said, Mr. President, that would be all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Oliver. Do any other council members have any presentations for this evening?
Yes, Council President, I do.
Yes, Council President, I do.
Yes, Councilman Spadola.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everybody. I am happy to recognize Wilmington Police Officers Captain Campos and Officer John McKeever. I don't think Captain Campos could make it today, but I do believe Officer McKeever is with us. If WITN could get his audio ready. But this is in regards to the community cleanup that they held in Tilton Park on April 24, 2021. I will read this. Tilton Park has been known as a beautiful urban oasis and public space for the diverse communities it surrounds. While Tilton Park serves as a staple in the community that is often bustling with activity, the park has had its share of wear and tear. Thanks to the surrounding residents and volunteers included Captain Wilfredo and Officer McKeever, Tilton Park has been able to maintain its safety, composition, and historical beauty. And whereas Captain Wilfredo and Officer McKeever seize an opportunity to build relationships with the community by organizing a park cleanup while maintaining their focus on public safety, social order, and crime control. Their strong commitment to community policing and building bridges between law enforcement and the community ensures the safety of the residents and guests who live, work, and play in Wilmington. Captain Campos and Officer McKeever have begun to utilize these relationships to help the Wilmington Police Department identify challenges, issues, and concerns emerging from the neighborhoods. And whereas Captain Wilfredo and Officer McKeever chose to be visible and accessible to the community by orchestrating the cleanup event, programs like this foster strong relationships with community residents while assisting in breaking down barriers and strengthening communications and ties that bind. The initiative and creative approach to community policing that both of them demonstrated should be held as a model. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the City of Wilmington that this council is pleased to commend Captain Campos and Officer McKeever for their outstanding commitment and dedication of service that they have provided to our community. And that's co-sponsored by myself, Councilwoman Fields and Councilman Field. And for those that were able to make the cleanup, it was a great event. A lot of neighbors out, a lot of diverse neighbors. You know, just a really good example, community policing focusing on the positivity that law enforcement can bring to the community. So I'm very grateful to you, Officer McKeever, for putting that together. And, you know, never underestimate the power that your uniform has to unite and bring people together. So with that, I'd love for you to say a few words.
Thank you, Councilman Spadola. I appreciate the kind words. Good evening, Council President Congo, council members, the City of Wilmington. It's an honor to be present today and accept this resolution. First, though, I do want to recognize West Side Grows Healthy Neighborhoods Manager Claire Hamilton and Friends of Tilton Park President Rob Pfeifer for their partnership in hosting the event. Without the two of them, I don't think the event would have been possible. I'd like to thank my superiors with WPD, who supported my interest in organizing the event. Specifically, my sector captain, Captain Campos, for introducing me to Claire, Rob, and many other friends of the Tilton Park community. I'd like to give a thanks to Lowe's for the generous donation of supplies. And I'd also like to thank Parks and Recreation for their participation and assistance throughout the event. For those that don't know, the event was hosted on April 24. We had about 50 volunteers come out and spread mulch, paint benches, and clean up the park. In my opinion, this event is just another testimony to how city officials, community organizations, the people, and the police can come together and achieve a common goal. In addition, events such as this are a perfect example of our department's crime reduction strategy, community policing. This past year, I've had peers that patrol the east side as well as the north side organize toy drives, food drives, which they, during Thanksgiving, which they donated to families so that they could have Thanksgiving meals. These acts of community policing were done by officers all while continuing their everyday duties while on patrol in the City of Wilmington. So to conclude, thank you, council, for recognizing my efforts. It truly does mean a lot. We, as officers in this department, strive to engage with the community in a positive manner every single shift. Whether it's through small gestures, friendly conversations, or organizing drives or park cleanups, these positive community engagements happen often. I can reassure you that recognizing this event will embolden officers to continue their community policing efforts while remaining humble and selfless in their service. Thank you.
Thank you, officer. Council President.
Thank you, council member, Councilwoman Oliver.
I was gonna wait for the officers, they both finished. I was gonna wait till they finished, and I wanted to say something.
Captain Campos isn't with us tonight.
Okay, I'm sorry, misunderstood here. Oh, I just want to, I mean, I would be remiss if I didn't thank the officers. They did do a drive on the east side and help out some family members. Captain Lieutenant Count with some other officers. I gave them two names and they, you know, they helped them out for the holidays. So I just wanted to, you know, thank them for the efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fields.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Hi, Officer McKeever. I'd just like to say I thank you so much for coming out Saturday. And like you said, West Side Grows and the mayor of Tilton Park, Rob Pfeifer, they definitely did their thing, and it's very appreciative. And I appreciate you just coming out into the community and to the Cool Springs and Tilton Park community and not feeling that it's robbery and getting out your car and just seeing what's going on in the neighborhood. You also brought your significant other. She came out and she did, what, Chick-fil-A? I believe, or something like that. Yeah, she brought Chick-fil-A. So, you know, it was a good day, it was a nice day, you know, everybody was out communicating and just cleaning up the neighborhoods. So again, continue your efforts. You know, we as council, we are always here for you. So anything that you are willing to do to better the neighborhoods or anything that we can do to help you with community policing, please let us know. We're here for you. Thank you again for a job well done. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fields. Councilwoman Cavereta?
Thank you so much. Officer McKeever, thank you for your efforts, and I think you hit the nail on the head. As we have more opportunities and activities for the community to interact with our police officers, that they see that, listen, you are human beings and you're out here doing your job, keeping us safe, to protect and to serve. And as we build, those relationships are so important. And to be seen in the community, just lending a hand, you know, not just enforcement of the law, but participating in bringing that community unity about, that trust is built. So I want to thank you individually, because I did run into you that day at the tail end of it all. And of course, Campos being a good friend, and I've watched him, you know, rise through the ranks, to be able to know that we can call on you and to help you in any way that we can to build these relationships and these friendships and the trust that we so desperately need in our community now with our law enforcement officers. So I want to thank you for all that you do beyond that day and just count on us to be partners and getting out there and just really making it happen. So thank you again.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, thank you so much, Keever. Make sure that you give Campos our appreciation also. You know, my colleagues pretty much hit on the heads, so I'm not going to repeat everything they said, but you are definitely appreciated.
Thanks, sir.
Any other, I don't see any other hands raised. So at this time, Councilwoman Fields? Go back to you.
Oh, I don't have anything this evening, Council President.
Okay, I'm sorry. Councilman Spadola.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Council President. That's all I have for non-legislative business.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you, Councilman Spadola. Any other council members have any presentations?
Yes, Council President.
All right, Councilwoman Dixon?
Thank you. I am... I just wanted to make sure, and I believe Jordan is on. I am presenting on behalf of myself, Councilwoman Walsh, and Councilwoman Darby. Whereas on June 5, 1981, the U.S. Center for Disease Control published an article describing a cluster of five young, previously healthy gay men, all experiencing the same rare lung disease, lung infection, which scientists would later identify as human immunodeficiency virus, which is known as HIV. This article is recognized as the first official report of AIDS. Whereas June 5, and I know we're a little bit behind, was marked as the 40th anniversary of the AIDS epidemic. This date is also recognized as HIV Long-Term Survivors Awareness Day, a celebration of the strength and resiliency of people living longest with HIV. And whereas in 1981, at the Wilmington Medical Center, the first Delawarean died of AIDS-related illness. Since then, 6,330 Delawareans have been diagnosed with HIV, 46% of which reside in Wilmington at the time of their diagnosis. As of May 2021, 36 of Delawareans' population living with HIV reside in Wilmington. In Delaware, 62% of persons living with HIV are 50 years or older. This is above the national average of 50% for persons living with the virus. Whereas Delawareans living with HIV, rely upon publicly-supported HIV healthcare providers and AIDS service organizations to help overcome barriers and that impede living a normal and self-fulfilled life. The Delaware HIV Consortium, an important service organization and partner in a fight for social justice and equality, is currently celebrating 30 years of incorporation in Delaware. Now and therefore be resolved by the council of the City of Wilmington that Wilmington City Council recognizes June 5 of 2021 as HIV Long-Term Survivors Awareness Day and the year 2021 as the 40th anniversary of HIV/AIDS epidemic and the 30th year anniversary of Delaware's HIV Consortium. And I didn't know if any of my other colleagues wanted to, Councilwoman Darby or Councilwoman Walsh, wanted to say something before Jordan jumps in.
I would please. And thank you for reading that, Council President.
Councilwoman Walsh.
Thank you. And thank you for reading that, Councilmember Dixon. When the AIDS epidemic first burst onto the national scene, people were petrified. They were petrified because in the mind of one who had tested positive, that was a death warrant. There wasn't any ifs, ands, or buts. It wasn't, oh, well, when we get a virus made. There was nothing like that, because this was a disease that was being sold as only gay men. Scientists didn't look at the real facts of what was going on with this virus. And it amazes me, and amazes them too, to know some older guys right now who are living with this and have lived with it for 25 and 30 years in some cases, who are so relieved that they had gotten second lease on life and are sitting here to tell their story, which I think is wonderful, and I think it's very comparable to what's going on in our country right now. That for those who don't want to get a vaccine for COVID, just as with AIDS, it wasn't always about you. It was about people that you might have contact with and what you could pass on to other people. And how far were you willing to go to help out fellow men and women? I salute all of those pioneers during the AIDS epidemic and for the long-term survivors. God bless each and every one of you. It's been a tough road for you, but it's really good to see you all standing. And that's all I have right now. Thank you.
And I'll jump, Council President.
Yes, Councilwoman Darby.
Yes, I just want to say that, just thank you, Jordan, to the organization for all the work that you guys are doing in Delaware. I am an ally. Most of the work that I do around HIV/AIDS is more specific to reproductive rights for birthing people who do have HIV or AIDS, who are living with it and who have children, right? So making sure that their birthing rights are being heard, that legislation is being passed to make sure that it makes it for the choices that they're making about their body are being honored and that is done in a safe way, in a way that is respectful to that person's body. So again, Councilwoman Dixon and Councilwoman Walsh, they said a lot of the things that I was going to hit on, but I just want to say thank you for the work that you're doing, and I'm just honored to have you here tonight. So that's all I have to say. Thank you, guys.
I thank you, Councilwoman Darby. So at this time, I do see other council members' hands raised, but we'll go to our speaker first, and then we'll come back to council members. Councilwoman Dixon, is that okay?
Absolutely.
Okay. Did you want to introduce your speaker?
I would like to introduce Jordan Hines, who is representing Delaware HIV Consortium.
Good evening, Council President Congo and members of city council and other, yes. My name is Jordan Hines. I'm Director of Community Planning here at Delaware HIV Consortium. I'm here representing not only the agency, but our Executive Director Tyler Burl, who I'd be remiss without mentioning. He apologized for not being here as he's away for two weeks. We just want to take the opportunity to thank all of you for this resolution, for marking the 40th anniversary for the beginning of HIV and/or AIDS epidemic that started in the United States. Now, while this resolution marks a solemn milestone for HIV, it also is a story of resilience and the resilience of thousands of survivors who have been living with HIV for decades. And on behalf of the long-term survivors, in my role as the Planning Council Director, we facilitate with DPH the entire HIV Planning Council. And I want to thank Councilwoman Darby and Councilwoman Dixon specifically for being so involved, as well as you, Councilwoman Walsh, for leading this charge. While you guys are putting this resolution out, by just recognizing it, you are definitely recognizing that you're standing in conjunction with our agency trying to end HIV and AIDS once and for all. So I can't thank you guys enough.
All right, thank you, Jordan. Councilwoman Oliver, I believe your hand was raised. I think she may have bad connection. Okay, I don't see any other council members' hands raised at this time. So, Councilwoman Dixon, back to you.
Thank you again, and I just want to, I do want to also give a shout out to Tyler, because I know if he could have been here, he would have been here, the Executive Director for Delaware HIV Consortium. And he is no, not a, I would say, he has been a friend of the city council, because he's also in his previous role where he was at the Delaware Housing Coalition. So I do want to say like the work that he is doing now with the Delaware HIV Consortium and all this important work, I'm so glad that he's in that space and doing that. So, and thank you, Jordan, for representing the organization today and the work you're doing with the organization as well.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Dixon. Do any other council members have any presentations? If not, I will recognize resolutions from all of council. We're recognizing the Achievers Program Incorporated on their 33rd anniversary. We are also recognizing Juneteenth, which I will speak to later. And also from all of council, sympathy for Carl Schnee. From Councilwoman Oliver, sympathy resolutions for Genevieve Holmes and Thelma Base. And from Councilmember Walsh, sympathy resolution for Joseph Doolin. Also want to say happy birthday. We have a birthday resolution for Linda Marks, who is celebrating her 70th birthday. And then as was mentioned earlier, from all of council, we have a sympathy resolution for Linda Smith. Councilwoman Gray spoke to that earlier. At this time, we will move to public comment. I just want to remind everyone that for public comment, there is a Google Form signup link in the chat for anyone who would like to speak. And there is a three-minute time limit. And please do not address any council members directly, but you can direct your comments towards, towards me. And once you're around, once you have about thirty seconds left of your time, I will give you a final reminder. So far, we have one person from the, from the community who would like to speak, and that is Angel Nieves, representing the Seventh District. Thank you, Mr. Nieves, for joining us. On WITN, is Mr. Nieves still with us? Okay, thank you, just unmuted his phone. Mr. Nieves?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for joining us.
Thank you. So, good evening. My name is Angel Nieves. I'm the Board Chair for the LGBTQ Women of La Raita, a nonprofit that hosts an annual Wilmington Atlantic Festival and a parade, Delaware's Kids Art Network Emerge Leaders Program. First, I would like to extend a big thank you to the Councilwoman Seal and Councilman Johnson for helping me with this, a great introduction to you, Council President Congo, and everyone present. I know my time is limited, but I wanted to express the importance of Pride Month and invite all of you to act for the support towards our annual Loot for Love event, which will be at the Wilmington Square on Marcus Street from twelve to four on Saturday, June the twenty-sixth. This three event closes out the, closes out Pride Month together to celebrate love, equality, diversity, and unity. Additional any donations will be to reach for our five thousand goals to our annual Nue Travares Partner Mural with the first ever LGBT mural. Pride Month for me means family, friends, and community. It is to acknowledge that we exist as we can live together amongst one another and as individuals to be voiced for the generations that are scared to be themselves and to let them know that we are here for you and you're not alone. And I just want to say thank you guys so much.
I thank you, Mr. Nieves, for, for joining us this evening and for everything that you're doing in the community. Keep up the great work and let us know how we can help you out, please. And we just had another, I remember from the public sign up, Ms. Christian Waller from the Fifth District. Christian Waller.
Hello, I'm.
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Oh, thank you. My name is Christian Willauer. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm a Wilmington resident and a volunteer with the Holmes Campaign. And tonight, the Holmes Campaign would like to encourage you to support substitute two to ordinance twenty-one dash zero zero eight, amend chapter five requiring detailed owner information to operate a residential rental property. This ordinance would require landlords to list affiliated LLCs when they apply for a rental license. LNI has limited resources, and so it's very important that they focus their limited resources on the real problem landlords. Sometimes landlords operate using multiple LLCs, so it's difficult for LNI to identify patterns such as single landlord, such as a single landlord having multiple properties with multiple code violations. This legislation would enable LNI to connect the dots and identify landlords with a pattern of neglecting their properties in order to focus enforcement actions on them. This would help the city use its resources effectively and by making it easier for LNI to get results through focused enforcement, help stabilize families and neighborhoods. And the second issue I wanted to talk to you about is to urge you not to support the introduction of a speeding ticket camera program. And the reason why I encourage you not to support this resolution is because it's really important to avoid using fines and fees as a source of income for the city. Fines and fees are supposed to be about enforcement, not generating income. I took a quick look at the city's budget since two thousand and two, and the trends show fines and fees playing a bigger and bigger role in total revenue, which is why I'm urging you to pay careful attention to this issue. The city of Wilmington population has been steady at about seventy-two thousand over the last twenty years. And in the same time period, the general fund has increased by eighty-six, about eighty-six percent from about ninety-two million in two thousand and two to about seven, one hundred and seventy-two million today. So across the country, raising taxes isn't easy politically, and there's a growing pattern in cities trying to make up the difference in taxation, falling behind spending with what people are starting to call hidden taxes in the form of licenses, fines, and fees. So here in Wilmington, the city's income from licenses, fines, and fees has more than doubled over the last twenty years, from about six million in two thousand and twenty-two to almost thirteen million projected for two thousand and twenty-two. Using cameras to issue speeding tickets could potentially lead to a pattern of filling gaps in the city's revenue from fines and fees. Fines and fees often are regressive, impacting low-income people more than higher-income groups. I urge Wilmington to be vigilant to avoid this trend and to focus on generating income for city services equitably. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Willauer, for your comments and for always engaging with us and for everything that you do in the community. You know what else that has signed up? At this time, we are going to, to move to legislative business. Councilmember Gray.
Nothing is saved, Mr. President.
Councilmember Darby.
Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the third and final reading.
Ordinance twenty-one zero zero eight, Agenda zero zero two-two, in ordinance to amend chapter five of the city code to require detailed owner informational applications for a business license to operate a residential rental property.
Mr. President, I have a substitute to present in lieu of that ordinance.
Substitute number two to ordinance number twenty-one zero zero eight, revision two to number Agenda zero zero two-two, in ordinance to amend chapter five of the city code to require detailed owner informational applications for a business license to operate a residential rental property.
Mr. President, I move that be known as the Enacting Clause of the Substitute Ordinance and call for a yea and nay vote.
It's been properly moved and seconded that be known as the Enacting Clause of the Substitute Ordinance and call for a yea and nay vote on the question.
Yes. This legislation is to require more details about the owner on the application, specifically having landlords list all of their LLCs and entities that operate as a rental property in a city on the business license application. And what this ordinance would do, it would provide transparency about who owns rental properties in Wilmington, to be able to connect the dots between if one entity owns multiple LLCs to see if they are a multi-offender and not providing the housing that all Wilmingtonans deserve, which is a safe housing. And this is, could have a potential to help hold owners and operators of rental properties accountable and help in the housing stock in Wilmington. So, yeah, that is pretty much the point of the legislation, identifying landlords hiding behind multiple LLCs.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Darby. Councilwoman Carrera.
You're muted.
Councilwoman Carrera, I believe you're muted.
I am, I am muted. I'm unmuted now. Thank you so much. Thank you. I understand the spirit of the legislation and wanting to make sure that we have all the necessary information. And the reason being is so that we are able to track who the landlords are and be able to implement enforcement so that they're not getting away. Now, if we want to know if there's a pattern and they own multiple properties, you know, that, that's something else. But I will say this, that in terms of the legislation, I remember when the application did not have enough information, when a license and inspection had a hard time being able to track these, these property owners. So some of the changes that were made previously on the application included that the owner's or the agent's name must be used, not just the name of the LACC, but a physical address, not a PO box, but the rental property address. In conversations with the License and Inspection Department Commissioner Starkey, as well as with the Finance Department, what they feel is that the information, the changes that they have now is enough for them to be able to do the enforcement without any problems and without any issues. So I am not going to support this, and I'll tell you another reason why, because there is a fiscal impact. Every time that we introduce legislation, we need to understand that in order to implement it, there's processes that have to go in place. So the additional funding is not being addressed. What is going to be made available to cover the cost of the future munis software development? The staffing responsibility and the paper costs. According to the Finance Department Director, the estimated cost of implementing the software change is approximately twenty thousand dollars. So I don't believe that that is something that if it's not needed, we don't need to implement it. If there was a void and there was a need and this would help us with our enforcement efforts, yes, I would be behind it a hundred percent. But I'm listening to the people who work in enforcement, and they're saying that this additional information is not going to make their life any easier because they have everything that they need. And what I am asking of the administration is when will we have the software available for the electronic application so that people can pay and apply and get their business licenses electronically so their checks don't get lost in the mail? So those are things that we can push for and, and have them implement that make sense and makes the process more user-friendly. But at this point, I, I cannot support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Carrera. Councilwoman Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do support this and for all the reasons that our public speaker, Ms. Willhauer, said. I'm not going to contradict that LNI said they have all the information they need to track down. But I know from experience that a lot of times people, not just landlords, but business owners hide behind multiple LLCs. And it takes a lot of research to get to the actual owner to do a, a court case against them. So I'm not understanding why they have all the information they need because I've run into this before and I thought that license and inspections had run into it. And it seems like every time something's going to benefit the community, there's a financial problem with it. And I know a big part of our duty is to be financially, fiscally responsible for the city, but we do have to spend money to improve things. And I think that this would be an improvement in the ability to find landlords so they can't hide under multiple LLCs. And also sometimes in tracking electricity bills, people are hiding under LLCs and people have the electricity turned off because there are bills under different LLCs and people don't realize this. So there's a lot of things about LLCs that can hide owners or people responsible for breaking the law. So I am supporting this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Gray. And Councilwoman Darby, I do see your hand raised, but I will give you an opportunity to speak last, so if you can just hold your comments and responses after all the other council members have already given theirs, and then you can give us a, the, the final words. Council, Councilman Field.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I want to make a couple of comments. Every single person working on this issue at the mayor's office and at, at different offices in the city shares the goal of this ordinance and would agree with the end goal. They, and, and I've talked to them and I have had extensive conversations with them on this in extreme detail. And I believe that this, the city already has, through its mapping software, the ability to track and identify the entities that are linked together through common ownership. And that's one of the primary concerns that this legislation is, is saying that needs to be fixed. I, I just, on the, I'm operating on the principle, if it's not broke, don't fix it. I do think that this legislation would create unnecessary redundancy, and the primary objective is already achieved. And the experts at LNI, who again share the goals of everybody that, that is promoting this bill, tell us that they don't need it. So I, at this point, don't, well, I agree a hundred percent with the goals of the sponsor of this bill. I don't see how this fixes an issue and solves a problem that isn't already being solved. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Field. Councilman Johnson.
And, and I'm speaking from a fiscal impact perspective. And similar to the sentiments of some of my colleagues, this is a very good bill, but it's unfunded. And it, the processes aren't worked out yet. It's not quite baked out. I believe some further amendments, some other negotiation, I think with administration would need to happen. And we need to figure out where to get the money from. Because again, we have a significant deficit with the city and resources are very scarce. So we need to figure out a way to do this. I, I certainly agree. But I think we need more negotiation at the table along with, you know, the lead sponsor there, sitting down with LNI, sitting down with Finance Department and figuring this out. Because I don't think enough has been baked out yet, and it's really just a process concern for me. So I would wish the legislation would hold for maybe more, more, more of this talk, but, you know, I'm obviously not the sponsor, but this is definitely something that I think we can improve upon and LNI can improve upon. But the bottom line is we're only the legislature and administration has to execute it. So they've made it clear that they can't execute what this is even, and it's going to actually make problems worse. So that's my only concern at, at this point.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Johnson. I don't see any other hands raised. Any other council members? So at this time, we're going to return back to the sponsor for our final comments, Councilman, Councilwoman Darby.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate everyone's comments. One thing I do want to mention from the last committee meeting, one of the last questions that I asked Commissioner Starkey was, are you able to connect one individual to multiple LLCs to know that they're connected to that one person? And his response was no. That was his response at the committee meeting, was that no, he's not able to identify that. He's not able to tell that if one person owns multiple, there's no way of him knowing that one entity, organization, or business has multiple LLCs. The fiscal pa, impact, I do understand that's something we can work at and talk about and figure out where the funding would come from. I could think of many ways where the funding could come from. We're spending fifty thousand dollars at Rodney Square, but many ways that we can cover the cost to make sure that we're able to identify who, who are the multi-offen, multiple, multi-offenders in the city of Wilmington and making, and making sure that we have housing that is safe for all people in Wilmington. So that's really just my last comments. The intent of it was to identify multiple landlords or business entities who were using and hiding behind many LLCs and were not able to make that connection. That was made clear that he was not, they're not able, they're able to get in contact with them, but they don't know if one person owns more than one LLC. So that's really it. I thank you, you guys, for your comments, but I do want it to clear that up, that Commissioner Starke, Starkey clearly said that he cannot make that connection and identify.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Darby. Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yeah, excuse me, yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
No.
Councilwoman Fields?
No.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
No.
Councilman Field?
No.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
No.
Councilwoman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
No.
Councilwoman Walsh?
No.
President Congo?
Yes.
Five yeas, seven nays, and one absent.
Declared defeated. Councilwoman Darby, any, any other legislation for this evening?
No, no other legislation, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Oliver.
Yes, Mr. President, I have.
Yes, Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading. Ordinance 21036, Agenda 0079, in order to authorize and approve a volume licensing to the City of Wilmington and Microsoft Corporation for Microsoft Computer Software.
First reading of the ordinance.
In order to authorize and approve a valid licensing agreement between the City of Wilmington and Microsoft Corporation for Microsoft Computer Software.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Yes, Mr. President, I move this be known for the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to Public Works and Transportation Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Public Works and Transportation Committee.
That will be all, Mr. President. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Fields.
Yes, Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the third and final reading.
Ordinance 21025, Agenda 0059, in order to authorize and approve an educational access channel agreement, Contract 22009, CCPS, between the City of Wilmington and the Red Clay Consolidated School District.
Mr. President, I move that this be known as the enactment clause of the ordinance and call for a yea and a vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that this be known as the enacting clause of the ordinance and call for yea and a vote on the question.
Oh, I'm sorry. The ordinance is being presented by City Council for Council's review and approval. This ordinance authorizes the execution This ordinance authorizes the execution of an educational access channel agreement, Contract 22009, CCPS, the agreement between the City of Wilmington and the Red Clay Consolidated School District for the operation and management of an educational access channel under the city's franchise agreement with Comcast of Newcastle County LLC. The agreement is for a period of two years from July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2023, with the possibility of a one-year extension thereafter. There is no cost to the city under the agreement. That's all. That's about it.
I see no hands raised. Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Gray.
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Field.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dixon.
Yes.
Councilman Spadola.
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh.
Yes.
President Congo.
Yes.
Four yeas and one absent.
Declared adopted. Councilmember Fields, any other legislation this evening?
Nothing else, Council President.
Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman McCoy.
I would like to say, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Johnson.
Yes, Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for a third and final reading.
Ordinance 21033, Agenda 0073, in order to amend Chapters 2, 39, and 40 of the City Code to change a position of city physician to city medical provider.
Mr. President, I move that be known as the enacting clause and call for a yea and a vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that be known as the enacting clause of the ordinance. On the question?
Yes, yes, Mr. President, this is a slight change to the City Code so that the city can actually, instead of a city physician being, have to be a physician, it can actually be a certified medical nurse as well. So it's a slight change. It's the housekeeping matter, but allows the administration and the city to have flexibility in terms of hiring medical professionals. As Dr. Sanoki, who is very well-known with the city, unfortunately, fortunately, after a long distinguished career, he is retiring. So we just want more flexibility in order to look at who will be his replacement. And there should be a cost savings for the city.
Okay. Thank you. I see no hands raised. Many council members. Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Gray.
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Field.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dixon.
Yes.
Councilman Spadola.
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh.
Yes.
President Congo.
Yes.
Four yeas and one absent.
Declared adopted.
Yes, Mr. President, I have another ordinance presented and call for third and final reading.
Ordinance 21034, Agenda 0074, in order to authorize and approve an agreement, Contract 22017, HRP test between the City of Wilmington and Jackie Jo Lindo, DPN, APRN, FMPC for medical provider services.
Mr. President, I move that be known as the enacting clause and call for a yea and a vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that be known as the enacting clause of the ordinance and call for a yea and a vote on the question.
Mr. President, this is being presented for review of council. This is an agreement authorizing after a search far and wide for Dr. Sanoki's replacement. The best selection the administration found in human resources was Jackie Jo Lindo, who was a certified nurse practitioner. She has all the required background and training to succeed Dr. Sanoki. This is a two-year agreement with possibilities of up to three one-year extensions. Ms. Lindo is a woman of color, is well-known in the medical community, and I believe will be a fine replacement for Dr. Sanoki.
Okay. Thank you. I see no hands raised from council members. Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Gray.
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Field.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dixon.
Yes.
Councilman Spadola.
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh.
Yes.
President Congo.
Yes.
Four yeas and one absent.
Declared adopted.
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe that's all the items I have to make.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Field.
Yes, Mr. President. I originally had a resolution related to the issue of dangerous driving and making Wilmington streets safer. In coordination with some of our Dover reps, I put forward a resolution asking City Council to ask Dover to pass enabling legislation, giving Wilmington permission to try a pilot program using automated camera enforcement tech, technology. Yesterday, we held a meeting with our Dover reps, or I held a meeting with some of our Dover reps. And the issue is complicated and Dover reps will be working with Del Dot and through the Bond Committee. And therefore, I will hold my resolution and I have no further legislation.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Field. Councilmember Cabrera.
Yes, Mr. President, I have, I'm sorry here, I have an ordinance to present and call for the third and final reading.
Ordinance 21035, Agenda 0076, in order to amend Chapter 34 of the City Code to revise the timing of appeals related to rental dwellings.
Mr. President, I move that that be known as the enacting clause of the ordinance and call for the yea and a vote.
Second.
It's been properly first and seconded that be known as the enacting clause of the ordinance and call for a yea and a vote on the question.
Mr. President, this ordinance is being presented as part of the overall housing reform initiatives in the city of Wilmington. When we worked and voted on amending certain sections of the Chapter 34 of the Housing Code, we heard from many individuals and organizations, the Landlord Association, the Homes Project, Realtors, individual landlords, and many residents. We welcome their input and most importantly, listened and acted upon their concerns and suggestions. This ordinance is being introduced as a result of that input. Concerns were brought up about the being able to appeal a citation when in violation of Housing Code. This includes the property not up to code when they get the initial citation, or whether the work has been completed and it's still unsatisfactory or does not meet the code. There could be a difference of opinions between the inspectors and the owners. The landlords were concerned that they may not be able to appeal twice, and we looked at doing that. But instead of a double appeal process with this ordinance, there was only one appeal process. As soon as you appeal, it stops any accumulation of fines, the ability, you have the ability to go before the Appeals Board. A seat on the Appeals Board has been designated for a member of the Landlord Association. And if still the property owner landlord is not happy with the outcome, they can still go to court. So they have multiple avenues to appeal a citation that they may not be in agreement. The city is not the final judge and the jury. In most cases, as noted by the commissioner and the landlords can speak, they said the landlord can speak with the inspector or the commissioner and resolve the issues before it gets to this point, which to date, it rarely does. This was confirmed by the Landlord Association members who did not complain about the current communication and work relationship with the city's LNI department. They find the commissioner and staff to be fair. However, they requested these measures as part of the code where if there ever comes a time that a new commissioner with a different management style comes along, protections are in place for the business owners and landlords. The goal is for Housing Code compliance and safe homes for residents, not collection of fees. After reviewing this legislation with Jeff Sheraton and other landlords, they feel it addresses their concerns and are supportive. I hope City Council will vote this into law and know that we are providing a fair process when it comes to housing enforcement, which is a benefit to all, especially residents living in homes that should be safe and up to code. I welcome any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Cabrera. Councilwoman Darby.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I want to say that, one, thank you to Councilwoman Cabrera for doing the amendments. I know when we were working on the housing reform that you have, which is, well, most people know it as the BLIGHT Bill, that we did not agree on a lot about feeding and finding people into compliance, but that you were able to listen to the community, listen to the Homes campaign, listen to the landlords and make this amendment. So I want to say thank you. I don't know if I'm a co-sponsor on this or not, but I am excited for this amendment and thank you again, Councilwoman Cabrera.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Darby. Councilwoman Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too would like to give kudos to Councilwoman Cabrera for making adjustments and I'd like to be a co-sponsor. Thank you.
So now the Councilwoman, I mean, Councilman Johnson.
I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor as well. This is, fits in line with a lot of the issues we're going to talk about in the next few months, about how to implement the ARPA, how to improve our housing stock, how to make it fair. So we're going to be talking a lot more about housing and I look forward to working with Councilmember Cabrera and her leadership and the rest of that committee in terms of us trying to find a fair housing for everyone in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Johnson. Councilwoman Fields.
I just want to say good job to Councilwoman at-large Cabrera. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fields. I see no other hands raised. We'll return back to our sponsor, Councilwoman Cabrera.
Well, I want to thank my council members for their support and for your kind words. And I really do look forward to all of us working together because we can all agree that there's a lot that needs to be done with our housing stock, but we really have to have that spirit of compromise. And as much as we went back and forth, the important thing is that we are keeping our residents in mind first and foremost, but that we also work with the business owners because the people who do invest in our city, who buy these properties up, especially as we're still trying to get our land bank properties out and get those fixed up so that they can become homes, future homes for more residents in Wilmington. We want to make sure that everything is done safely and up to code, but we also want to be fair and make sure that there is a process when there is a disagreement. And yes, this was a lot of work, but we came together to make these amendments and the most important lesson to be learned is that we have to listen, that it doesn't always have to be one way, that there's multiple ways that we can do things and to be fair and to be just for everyone. So thank you for your support and that is it.
Thank you, Council. Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Gray.
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Field.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dixon.
Yes.
Councilman Spadola.
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh.
Yes.
President Congo.
Yes.
Four yeas and one absent.
Declared adopted.
I have nothing else this evening, Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman Dixon.
Nothing this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilman Spadola.
Yes, Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the third and final reading.
Ordinance 21022, Agenda 0049, in order to amend Chapter 2 of the City Code to prohibit the establishment of police ticket and arrest quotas.
Mr. President, I move that be known as the enacting clause of the ordinance and call for the yea and a vote.
Second.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that be known as the enacting clause of the ordinance and call for a yea and a vote on the question.
Thank you, Council President. This legislation is simple. It protects police officers from being or feeling forced to make arrests. It enables them to use their discretion and focus on solving the problem. It enables them to spend time on community policing events like the one we just honored Officer McKeever for and not feel compelled to just, you know, stop people or, you know, try to go make arrests, enables them to build bonds with the community. Wilmington doesn't have a quota now, but this will prevent them from being instituted in the future when we eventually do get a new police chief. And it also, right now, removes the perception of them existing anyway. So, you know, I encourage my council members to support this. You know, it's pro-police, it's pro-community, it's, this is, I think, rare legislation where the Blue Lives Matter and Black Lives Matter folk could rally around because everybody wins from this. So thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Spadola. Councilman Johnson.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Spadola. And I think I'm already added as a co-sponsor. I think Maribel should have that, but I just want to again, thank Councilmember Spadola for bringing this to everyone's attention and continuing to work on these initiatives. This is something to Councilmember Spadola's credit, way before he was a member of council, we discussed this. I mean, he was just a community activist, someone working on reform. So this is something that he took an idea that he had before he got on council and is now working to make it happen. So again, hats off to Councilmember Spadola and I look forward to continuing to move the ball forward as we have a lot of police reform coming up later this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too would like to thank Councilman Spadola. When I first read this piece, I called him on the phone, we talked in length about it, and I do think it's where the police needed a quota. I mean, like you said, it's not a quota, but to me indirectly sometime, I mean, after the pandemic, seemed like they were just pulling people over because they weren't getting, you know, able to give out tickets. So I think this is a good piece and I would like to be a sponsor and I'll be keeping my eyes out on them pulling people over. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cabrera.
Yes, I want to thank Councilman Spadola and as the chief said. And as the chief said, that as of now, there is no quota system set in place. But we all understand that perception is reality. And even though it may not exist, sometimes when you codify something, it gives that assurance and it builds that trust in the community that it, you say it doesn't exist, but suppose it does, but at least now with having it codified, we know that it's not allowed, it's not permissible, it's unacceptable. And it's important to have the transparency as we continue to build trust. And I can say that in this meeting tonight, we are seeing where there has been consensus building, there has been compromise, and that's really what it's all about. And I'm glad that we're making these positive moves forward. So thank you again. And I would like to be added as a sponsor if possible. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Darby.
Yes, thank you. I just want to say this was great legislation. I'm happy to see this. And the aspect or perspective I'm coming at in supporting this legislation is for the community. I know in other locations that have ticket and arrest quotas, black and brown people are disproportionately impacted. Imagine how many people across this nation are sitting in prison because of things like this, who are being affected by this, by coming home and being returning citizens. So I'm in this for the community. I'm in this for protecting the residents here in Wilmington. Because I am not pro-police and there is no such thing as a Blue Lives Matter, but I'm here for the community and making sure things like this and police reform is happening here in Wilmington.
Thank you, Councilwoman Darby. I don't see any other hands raised, so we will return to our sponsor, Councilman Spadola.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you to my colleagues for their supportive comments. You know, a lot of criminal justice reform measures focus on stuff after the fact, after the bad incident already happened. This is something that ideally will prevent some incidents from happening while, you know, fully supporting police officers to do their job and keep us safe in the manner, in the manner they feel most necessary, not what their lieutenant behind, sitting behind the desk is dictating them to do. This is something that after we pass it, I think we should try to take it to the state. Because if it's not a problem here, I think there's other places it is a problem. I know that for a fact. So look forward to the support from the council to getting this done and over as well. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Spadola. Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver? Councilwoman Oliver? Councilwoman Fields?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Walsh?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver? One more time.
Oh, sorry, I was, yeah, yes, my mute button, yes.
Thank you. President Congo?
Yes.
Twelve yeas and one absent.
Declare adopted. Any other legislation, Councilman Spadola?
Not tonight, sir, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a resolution to present.
Resolution twenty-one zero thirty-nine, Agenda zero zero eight-one, where our City Council enacted City Code Section two three two, establishing procedures for the chief of the Wilmington Police.
Mr. President, I move that be known as reading that that resolution, that it be received, recorded and filed and adopted by ye and a vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and secondly, that be known that that resolution be received, recorded and filed, adopted by ye and a vote on the question.
Mr. President, this is somewhat of a housekeeping measure. It's required by the Chief of Police, according to City Code, that once we hit below ninety-five percent of the amount of officers that we have in our budget, that they have to start preparing to put another class together. And that's all this simply is. It's notification that currently we're below level and we're going to start the procedures that would put a new recruit class together. We, meaning the police department.
Hey, thank you. Councilwoman Darby.
Yes, I just want to say I am, even if it is required for the chief to report if he's fallen below a certain percentage and the number of police officers in his department, I am not in support of this resolution for commencement of a new academy class, if it happens this year, next year, five years from now, whenever the class is happening. The focus for our police department should be adding social workers, mental health clinicians, and alcohol and drug counselors to work with the police department to provide the needed services. So I'm not in support of adding more police officers in our community when the issues that are being addressed aren't being addressed and people who need help are being further criminalized. And those are our residents and people we should care about. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Darby. Councilwoman Gray?
Thank you. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Darby basically took the words out of my mouth. I cannot support this housekeeping matter either. You know, there is so much depression, anxiety, addiction, and other community complaints that I think some of these positions can be used, as Councilwoman Darby said, for mental health specialists, drug and alcohol addiction specialists, as part of the police department. So I really think that we need to look at how these positions are going to be used. I'm not against an academy, I'm getting, I'm fulfilling the criteria for a number of police, but I think some of the positions should be, should be focused on problems in the community. We should be providing public safety besides policing or in conjunction with policing. So for that reason, until we look at how these positions are used or how they could be re-appropriated, I can't support this resolution. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Gray. Yeah, the hands raised. I also would not be supporting this resolution for several reasons. One of the main reasons is that our police department still lacks diversity. It is not representative of the city of Wilmington. And I just don't see the sense of urgency from our police department to become more diverse. And I don't see our police department taking ownership of that, like I saw from, like I heard from our fire department. Both departments are extremely lacking when it comes to diversity. But I did hear our current fire chief accept that responsibility and say he wants to do better. All we constantly get back, the feedback that we get from our police department is that nobody wants to be a police officer and it's extremely hard. But I just haven't seen the massive campaign to try to get our police department to be more diverse. I just, I haven't seen that. They may send us updates, I don't see, I don't see it shared publicly. I don't see, I don't hear it on the radio, I don't see it on our TV stations the way that, that I think that we should in the way that I think that it needs to be, if we're really sincere about trying to make our department more diverse. So until that happens, and this has been my concern on council for several classes now, and I just don't see us doing better. I know our last, our last class was an improvement, but it still is not where we need to be. And I think that we need to take a look at how we hire. I think we need to take a look at the testing to make sure that it's fair and that we are not eliminating minorities and specifically black minorities when it comes to, to taking the tests. So until that, until I see that, I can't support this, this resolution. I know it's just an announcement, but I can't give it my okay. Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes, Mr. President. You know, hearing the comments of my council colleagues, I will say that I agree with you, all the things that you mentioned. There should be mental health counseling, there should be innovative programs that other police departments are starting to input so that there's more collaboration with the community so we can build trust and that we can look at policing differently than what we do now. I agree with all of that. And I think that we have an opportunity here, City Council, especially with the way things are going nationally and the trend, that we have an opportunity to work hand in hand with the police department in their recruitment efforts, in working with the state legislatures and others to increase budgeting and to make the necessary changes so that we can have those additional resources besides just the policing. It's an opportunity that we could all work together to help with that recruitment. I went to the graduation ceremony. I spoke to one of our former Latino police officers and I commented the fact that there was only one Hispanic and it was a female. Happy to see and have her there and to welcome her. So of course, I'm concerned because there's diversity lacking with people in my community that speak the language. And we want police officers to look like the community. However, what he said to me was, Maria, people don't understand how hard it is. We recruit them, we had people that showed up, but passing the background checks, all the, the smallest minute thing that could be on your record, that could keep you from becoming a police officer. There are so many hurdles that they have to go through that when you show up at the end, the academy that you have graduating looks very different than all the people that applied. So I believe that we should have the billboards and all the things that we discussed during the budget hearings. Let's take this opportunity to implement so that we can really reach out and do a thorough outreach efforts to recruit the people that we need and the types of people that we need and our police department and work hand in hand with them. Because at the end of the day, we, we may say we don't support this, we don't want to do this, but if our numbers go low, our police officers are hurt, they're not, they're injured. We don't have people out there. I don't care how anybody feels about the police on this council, but I know that if you need the police, you're going to call them. You're going to call for help if your constituent needs help. So we can't just turn our backs either and not give them the resources that they need to vote against things like your uniforms. I mean, something as basic as uniforms or the tools. So everybody here got elected to office, you're entitled to your opinions, you can vote accordingly. But let's not be hypocrites because at the end of the day, you need the police, you will be calling them. So it's very sad when we turn our backs and not give them the resources that they need. So at this point, if they say they need more people, yes, I'm supporting this. But let's, instead of complaining, let's come up, let's work together and let's make a plan to help them get the people that they need. And we can be part of that as leaders because it really falls on our shoulders as well. That's all I have to say.
I thank you, Councilwoman Cabrera. Councilman, Councilwoman Gray, this is your second time speaking to this legislation.
Yes, yes, thank you. Thanks for all the support and discussion about cooperation. Well, I think we need to have more robust Public Safety Committee meetings. And very frequently, we can't discuss these issues because it's being limited, the discussion is being limited. So I'm really also to being able to discuss these type of issues and go where it takes us so that all council members can be involved in it. But also, I am not suggesting that we not give the police officers what they need to work. They have what they need to work. We're talking about getting additional officers. And I just think additional officers should be used differently.
My God.
Not that we shouldn't have them. And I have some statistics here that I didn't have at the committee meeting, so that's the reason I didn't present them there, is that in two of the months in two thousand nineteen, twenty-two hundred calls to the police were violent crimes, but eighty-five hundred were non-violent crimes. And that doesn't mean they weren't crimes, but probably a lot of them were nuisance crimes. Sorry about my phone in the background. And nuisance crimes could possibly be things like drunk parking, trucks parking, intoxication on the street, domestic violence, and all of those could be handled by people that don't have to be police officers. So I think we should add to the police department's toolkit. They can be police officers trained.
Point of order.
Excuse me? No, you're not interrupting.
No.
A point of order.
Councilwoman Gray. Councilwoman Oliver, what's your point of order?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just saying, I'm reading a resolution, this is Wilmington Police Commis, this is about the academy class. That was all my point of order. She says she would like to give all the stats and I was just saying, this is about the police classes, right in the resolution, so this is not the time for that.
Yes, I believe that Councilwoman Gray is giving her reasoning for not supporting the resolution.
Correct. And like I said, I'm giving this information now because I didn't have it at committee. And we can vote on her point of order. I'm basically finished, but we can vote on it.
No, we can't.
I'm done, I'm done.
Okay, we finished.
So I'm, I'm going to finish up. I'm just pointing out that there's a lot of room for police safety or public community safety that does not necessitate a full-fledged police officer. And I think there should be room in our police department for these type of positions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Gray. Council, Councilman Johnson?
Just wanted to speak from the perspective of, I was the lead sponsor on the last academy class resolution we went through about two years ago. And what I could say is, I, I hear my colleagues about reforming the department, as was noted during this budget process. Unfortunately, we can't just dismantle the department right now as even cities like Seattle is, you seem to do. They may have tried, but it wasn't successful because of many, not on legal issues, but logistical issues. Because you need something to replace the police department as we know it. We need to reimagine policing. So I certainly understand everyone and I'm certainly along with them. But there's a lot of pieces we need to get in place, namely funding, whether it's state or federal. There's a lot that needs to happen and we're certainly working towards that. So I encourage everyone, as we have these meetings with the police department, to please come out because we do need to find this alternative policing. But I think for now, we can't have an overmanned and overstressed department. They've already had one of the most stressful years in law enforcement history, obviously. And I think we need to figure out how we can support the current officers. And yes, we will work to reimagine it, but right now, we are, we are moving forward. And a diversity issue, we took significant steps. There was a full, I believe, ten-page report from, from Captain Counts and his team about that. Power ninety-nine radio ads, billboards, whatever have you. And I don't think it's just Wilmington Department, departments around the country are facing this problem. That law enforcement is an unpopular profession. This point blank is, is, is many people don't trust the police. So this is something that's very, very complex, takes many angles. But best believe, I know from my perspective, we are working hard to work with the department to recruit a diverse class, but simply, people aren't interested. There's not a lot of interest, interest in the community. So maybe we do need to look at how we can reimagine the department. And maybe people are interested in being counselors or therapists, that might be an alternative. So we have a lot of things discussed in the city of Wilmington, but number one priority is safety and we definitely need to commence with the academy class right now.
Thank you, Councilman Johnson. And Councilwoman Fields?
Thank you, Council President. I was kind of, I was trying to figure out if I should say something, but, you know, if I don't say it, then I'm, I'm, I'm going, I'm not going to be happy. So I'm going to say this. I do agree as far as diversity. I do, and, and that is very important, that they police, that we have people that's, that's policing us that look like us. That's very true. I'm going to agree with what Council Johnson, Johnson said. Everybody doesn't want to be one. I get it, we can't make everybody be one. But my point is this. Everyone wants to point the, the finger at the Wilmington City Police Department about mental health, social service, those components of community policing. The city does not, they don't, the city doesn't, we don't, we don't have control over that. The state has control over that. So why aren't we trying to pull those components into the Wilmington City Police instead of blaming the police for not having that part as community policing? You see, everything is city, 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 but we're not reaching out to the state, state, state and, and, and down Dover. So, you know, it's one thing to say, yeah, okay, it's the city. But it's another thing to try to put two components that's not matching up. If you want to talk about partnering, if you want to talk about diversity, if you want to talk about making this work for the city of Wilmington, making, making this diverse, making this work for our people, because it's not about the powers, it's about the people, then what we need to do is stop talking about what the city isn't doing and let's talk about what the state isn't doing and seeing how we can partner with our senate and our state representatives to see how they are going to partner with our police department to make sure that we can work effectively and efficiently throughout our black and brown communities as well as making sure that they also put out there that we, we need people of diverse backgrounds. So as, in the city of Wilmington, if we're putting it out there, if we got billboards, make sure that they put it out there too. So I just want to say, you know, I, I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit fed up with everybody always pointing at the city of Wilmington about these certain services, but it's not, we don't, we don't offer those services, the state offer those services. So stop beating us up and let's look at our, let's look at your state representative and your state senator and start talking to them about how we can work together as a one, as one council, as one community, as one people for the, for the people and not for the power. So again, let's work with the state and not just blame everything on the city. That's all I have. So again, let's work with the state and not just blame everything on the city. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Fields. Councilwoman. Councilwoman Oliver, is your hand still raised?
No, I just took it down. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Cabrera, this is, this is your second time.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I did want to add on to what Councilwoman Fields said, because she made, she hit the nail on the head. The other part that isn't part of this discussion is, we're not talking about the judicial system, the systematic problems that we have in the judicial system. See, when things happen and crimes happen.
Y'all, this is, y'all, point of order. This is at, this is not on this resolution, y'all.
Councilwoman Oliver, what's your point of order?
Or not?
My point of order, Mr. President, is I'm reading this resolution, and it's just a recommendation, and we done went all the way left. And I think some of this stuff can be on your, on, on petitions and communications if they want to, you know, express some of this. But I'm reading this, and they, this is out of order. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
People are making comments as to why they're not going to support this. I'm making a comment why we should. Councilwoman Fields pointed out that it's more than, that everything that we're saying that we need in the police department and where the resources should be used, instead of hiring more police, come from the state. And part of the issues and problems that we do have with public safety and the support that the police officers don't get comes from the fact that we have a broken and systematic judicial system. And that's something else that we should be working on if we want to increase public safety and reimagine policing in the city of Wilmington. That we got to look at all the moving pieces that go beyond the city and beyond city council. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Cabrera. Councilwoman McCoy.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. I just had one small statement. I do understand and appreciate Councilwoman Oliver's trying to keep everything on, on task. To me, this is a conversation that definitely needs to be held at our public safety meeting. Unfortunately, at the time, like, we definitely are stringent to the agenda. We can't have this more broader conversation about what's going on when, when it comes to policing. So I just wanted to, um, I'm like, I personally do understand what's going on with the police department. I've had many conversations with the police chief. I'm aware of where his numbers are, the number he has to report, but exactly what the number truly is. I'm at this time, I will be supporting this, but I do have true understanding on why we need to start looking at other things. I just want to state that we need to really have these conversations on our committee. That is all.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman McCoy. Councilwoman Darby.
Yeah, thank you.
Is, is your second time speaking?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I had a question about the fiscal impact. How much does it cost to um, have a new class commence every time it happens? And is that already in the budget, or that would be money that we need to find from somewhere to have?
Okay, thank you. We'll let the sponsor address that, and she has the final word. Any comments, Councilwoman Darby?
No, oh, that was, I just had a question about the specific, um, uh, the specific resolution. I don't want to be point of order, because y'all just all over the place. But I have a question about the fiscal impact.
Thank you, Councilwoman Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, um, I was going to comment on Councilwoman McCoy's. I mean, I just liked the way she said she's been in conversation with the chief as well as myself. She picks up the telephone, she makes her phone calls, um, she sends her emails. So sometimes, some of this um, conversation is just, um, is just about picking up the phone or sending an email and having.
Isn't this point of order?
Yes, point of order. What's your point of order, Mr. Councilwoman Darby?
This has nothing to do with the resolution. So like, this is really getting on my nerves. Like, y'all do this for certain people and allow certain people to do stuff. Call point of order for everybody, not just for certain people. That was point of order. That had nothing to do with the resolution.
Your point of order is accepted. Thank you. Uh, seeing no other comments from council, council members, seeing no other hands raised. And just for my second time speaking, again, my, um, my reluctance in, in supporting this academy is because of the lack of diversity on the police department and no sense of urgency from our police department. And we have one of the largest police departments per capita in the country. So at that time, I, this time, I will return back to the sponsor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not quite sure what I'm defending here. I'm certainly not defending the resolution that I put before this council. I believe what Councilmember Oliver was trying to say is, all these issues that everyone has brought up are very important. They have nothing to do with this resolution. If this was not a part of the code that the chief had to do to put council on notice that they're behind in their numbers, we wouldn't even have this before us. We could ask all those other questions. But this is simply notification to us. It does not as three and a half, I want to say half, because one council member said it and then kind of withdrew it, that we were adding police officers, we are not adding anything to the police budget. It is a notification, and we cannot add without another separate resolution more jobs on the police department without a budget amendment. So this is simply notification, that's all it is, that will be low our ninety-five percent, and we're going to start moving on. And I call for the vote.
Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Gray?
No.
Councilwoman Darby?
Nope.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dixon?
Yes.
Ms. Spadola?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh?
Yes.
President Congo?
No.
Nine years, three years, and what happened?
Fair enough.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's all the legislation I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Walsh. At this time, we will move to petitions and communications, um, starting with Councilwoman Gray.
Happy this evening, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Darby?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Some announcements that I do have is that Tennis Rock House in the Second District, they are looking for enrollment for their tennis program and for their tutoring program that they're going to have this summer. Um, Ms. Rashida at the Youth Entrepreneurship Building, she is starting a horseback riding program this summer. If you're interested in these programs that are being offered, um, well, anyone in any district can participate. But if you're interested, please, um, contact me, um, go to the Wilmington City Council website, just shoot me an email. I can get you connected, um, to both of those programs that are within the Second District. Um, and that's really just my announcements for tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, this been a Juneteenth celebration weekend. It's a lot going on. I'm going to just announce, uh, it's going over to, um, uh, warehouse, over to Reach Warehouse with Logan and Ken Edes, which will be the nineteenth. Uh, and it was ironic, all of them around the same time. Uh, and I know it's a real big event, and Councilman Harley's been talking about Rodney Square with, um, uh, Take Six and, uh, I think, uh, Rapper, and so that's supposed to be really big. I think all of them are between like twelve and five. I just know it's, um, and it's another event. Oh, the YMCA is having something from like two to five, so just wanted to, you know, uh, just let everybody know there is a lot of events going on for Juneteenth, a big celebration this weekend. Thank you. That'd be all, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Fields.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. Um, I just wanted to, uh, well, Councilwoman, um, Oliver spoke about it. The Wilmington, Wilmington Library's first annual Juneteenth Festival, um, is going to be at one thousand North Market Street from twelve to six P M., and that's going to be on Saturday the nineteenth. And, um, hold on, it was another event. Um, also, they have a Pride Bowling at the Bollarama in Newcastle from seven, um, from seven to nine this Saturday. And one more, bear with me. There's another one happening at, um, I think, is and guns, Three O Two Guns Down and, um, Gorilla Republic. They are having their second annual Juneteenth, um, event at the, um, at the Delaware Museum, um, in, uh, on Kent Moore, um, from ten, from ten to twelve on Saturday as well. I think I said that right. Um, and my closing quotes, you know, I like my closing quotes. So pride, love is love, gay rights are human rights, be you, do you, celebrate you. Being gay is like being left-handed. Some people are, most people aren't, and nobody really knows why. It's not right or wrong, it's just the way things are. Juneteenth, every great dream begins with a dreamer. Always remember, you have the things, patience and the passion to reach for the stars that change the world. Harriet Tubman wishing you all peace and a proud and happy Juneteenth. Thank you, Council President.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman McCoy.
Um, uh, thank you, Mr. President. Actually, I only had just one thing to say. Um, I just wanted to wish my grandmother a happy ninetieth birthday. It'll be her birthday this weekend. Um, and, um, I just would like to know if I can be excused.
Yes, you may. Thank you. Councilman Johnson.
I have a few announcements, uh, for, on the west side of citywide. Uh, first is at Milk and Honey Coffee House, uh, this Saturday, um, from nine to one. There is live, um, swing jazz music from Diamond Swing Jazz Group and, uh, Gable Music Ventures. Everyone knows them from the Ladybug Festival. They'll be doing a west side event. Um, it promises to be a lot of fun, and it's actually going to be in conjunction with Small Business Saturday, which, um, uh, in the early days of this pandemic, Small Business Saturday has been a gym, uh, for a lot of small business owners um, throughout our area. So please come out, uh, to, to Union Street for that. Should be a, a very good time. You may get to see some of my dance moves while you're out there. Um, also, we have Restaurant Week, actually, citywide, um, ends tomorrow. So, um, please come out and frequent, um, your area restaurants from Market Street um, to Union Street, to Lincoln. There's a, um, lot of great, uh, uh, dinner options, lunch options, there's a lot of great deals. So please come out again, support our small businesses, come on and support our workers um, so that we're, um, able to continue having a vibrant Wilmington. And last but not least, um, on the theme of Pride, there is Pride on the Parkway next Sunday, uh, on Bancroft Parkway, um, at Sycamore Bancroft. Um, there's going to be many special guests, um, both from Crimson Moon and some other locations. Um, and that's again, closing out Pride Month the, the right way. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember, Councilman Field.
Nothing else tonight, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Cabrera.
All right, come, all right. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I would like to take this time to thank everyone who attended the family fun day event. We did have a big crowd. A lot of people came from the community, and they came from even outside of Wilmington. This was a very successful event. We had great weather, excellent location. And most important, a collaboration of many organizations, the media, state, city government. The event was open to all, but we did focus on the hard-to-reach Latino community, who still makes up six-point-nine percent of the total population vaccinated in Delaware. People came from everywhere, and we were able to vaccinate fifty-two people that day, which is a number much higher than what was expected. So I just want to take this time to just thank everybody who made this possible. President Congo, uh, thank you for making the financial donation on behalf of city council as a whole. We provided meal tickets with that donation for everyone who received the vaccine. The radio station matched it, so we literally had a hundred, um, meal tickets provided, uh, for those that received the vaccine. We also provided free water ice for all, field games and the prizes. Uh, Councilwoman Spadola, McCoy, Johnson, Fields and Harley all attended. Spadola and James, uh, were leading the field games. Um, Councilwoman McCoy and Fields were helping with the water ice. Councilmember Harley was speaking to constituents, and Councilmember Oliver helped with flyer distribution in her district. In fact, she was the inspiration, as I went to one of her events at Price Park to get my first vaccine and knew that we should do something similar to encourage the Latino community to come out. The lieutenant governor was on hand, and she shot me again, so I got my second vaccine. Her community affairs director, Edwin Hernandez Vargas, he was the right hand and with the coordination of the event. Uh, the mayor's office staff helped with the promotion, making sure we had everything that we needed from the Parks Department. So a big thank you to those workers from Parks for setting everything up and breaking down. And even the new director, Ian Smith, came by with his wife. We're happy to welcome him as part of the city team. And we do look forward to working more opportunities to collaborate, uh, with them. Carmen Ferguson from Parks also jumped in to help with the water ice and help clean up. But the biggest thank you that I like to give is to our own, um, legislative aide, Tracy Owens, who was relentless in making sure that we were all notified. She kept me on points to make sure that nothing would be missing, down to the very last detail. She helped with the water ice and the field game. So again, setting up, breaking down, thank you, Tracy. I do want to mention that our newest radio station, La Maxima, one oh four point one F M, was there doing a live broadcast. Thank you to them and Kevin Andrade. A reminder to our council members, if you're trying to reach out to any of your constituents, especially in the Hispanic community, use the resources of the radio station. You are all more than welcome to come on board. It's an open invitation for all. Mr. President, I told him that you speak Spanish, and you will be a great candidate to go on the radio program. Also, wanted to thank, um, newspaper Ollin Delaware, Roberto Clementali, who hosted the event and cooked the delicious food, which they sold out of, and they also helped with the organizing. Parents and team members came. The president of the league, Mike Beltran, got his first shot. And his children, who are over twelve, also were vaccinated. The Latin American Community Center provided the children's entertainment. Um, this event really highlighted what we can achieve when we all work together and collaborate for the greater good. So thank you. And one last point is, um, just to recognize that this year should be the first year, will be the first year that we recognize Juneteenth as a national holiday. So thank you, President Biden. Thank you to Congress. And, and I'm so glad that we're finally recognizing our history, looking at it and teaching others. And this weekend is going to be a great event in Wilmington, as Councilwoman Oliver said, so many things to do. So come out, the art museum has a festival, there's, will be something at Rodney Square. Um, just a bunch of events everywhere, art installation, um, over there, the, you know, the teen warehouse, as she mentioned. Just look on the site, the website, and see all the things that are going on and try to come out and enjoy. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Council, Councilman Dixon.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, just to kind of follow up on what, uh, some of my colleagues have been talking about already with Juneteenth. Um, just to expand on what, um, Councilwoman Cabrera just said, um, the art museum is having an event. Um, their event is from ten A M. to four P M. Um, it is their second annual Beyond Juneteenth event. Um, and it will be in person. Um, and they'll have live music, food, uh, arts and craft vendors, um, and, and guest speakers that'll be there as well. Um, in addition to, uh, going to see, uh, Councilman Johnson, uh, doing his dance moves. You can come see me at Open Streets, uh, jumping rope, uh, for Open Streets um, on Saturday, um, from two to five at the teen warehouse. Um, so looking forward to seeing you all out this weekend. And again, uh, we still are within a pandemic, so still to stay cautious at the same time of, of being out um, in our communities, enjoying a lot of festivities, uh, for Juneteenth. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Spadola.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, I don't have much, just wanted to thank Councilmember Cabrera for putting on a great event last weekend, uh, as well as Tracy Owens, who was instrumental in, uh, getting the games going and whatnot. Uh, and I look forward to, uh, seeing a lot of people out at the Juneteenth events this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Walsh.
Just a couple of things, Mr. President. I think the residents, um, better pay attention and realize the city is getting very serious about doing things that they haven't done for a year and a half. And that's like turning people's water off and those sorts of things. If you owe the city money and you do not have a contract with them, please make one as soon as you can.
If you owe the city money and you do not have a contract with them, please make one as soon as you can. Uh, if you want to see what you can make a contract for, just please dial three one one. And you should easily be able to walk yourself through whether it's water bills or parking tickets or whatever it would be. But I would really advise you before things totally get out of hand, um, that you might sign up for that. Um, as far as the Public Safety Committee is concerned, there has not been a time that a council member has given a written request for something to be done, that it hasn't been granted. Councilmember Darby, um, people might think I ignore what she says to me. I don't. She had asked that there be presentations from the police department and the fire department on their discipline and on their promotional pr- programs. They were both presented to her and to everybody. All you have to do is ask. You can get me by cellphone, you can get me, um, by email, by text, by private Facebook message, by private cellphone message. You know, there's five or six ways to get me or knock on my door. And I will surely give you whatever subject you want to hear something on. But I'm not going to take shout, shout outs on council floor. I'm not going to have our council continue acting like we're a class of fifth graders. And that we can do and say whatever we want, when we want to do and say it. That's not how these meetings are supposed to be run, whether it's a council meeting or a committee meeting. And if everybody else wants to run their meetings that way, that's fine. That's on them. That's their meeting. It's not the way I run my meetings. So if I have to continue taking, uh, comments about it, I just have to. Um, and I'll try and end this on a very nice note. Um, I don't believe I've heard anybody wish anyone a happy Father's Day this Sunday. Um, for all of you men who step up to the plate for the boys of our nation and especially of our city, I thank you from the bottom of our heart. You can be a father in many, many ways. Uh, you don't necessarily have to be the birth parent of that father. So please, if you have your own children, keep making sure they get lots of hugs. If you don't have any children but would like to mentor a young man, there are plenty of organizations in our towns that do it. So to all your fathers, I take my hat off to you and wish you a very happy Father's Day. Thank you. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. I just, just have a few announcements. Most of my colleagues already touched on, uh, the, the several Juneteenth announcements, so I'm not going to go back over those. But if anyone does have any questions, uh, about those announcements that were already made, you can call us at the city council office at five seven six two one four zero. Again, our number is five seven six twenty-one forty. Uh, Grazia in the Grass is presented by the city of Wilmington. It's a musical series. Uh, fun music and line dancing, much, much more. It's every Thursday in June from six to eight P M. On the next one will be June seventeenth at Kirkwood Park. Then on the twenty-fourth, uh, we will be at, uh, Monlove Park on twenty-fourth and Tatton Streets. For more information, you can call, uh, Rashid Mustafa at five seven six three eight four zero, five seven six three eight four zero. Uh, city pools and spray parks are open for the summer. Uh, Eden Park, Eden Park Pool on Newcastle Avenue, the Joseph or Biden Aquatic Center, formerly Prices Run Pool on twenty-sixth and Speakman, and, uh, Women, woman, William Hicks Anderson Center on Fifth and Madison Streets. We also have, um, spray parks, the Helen Chambers Park on Sixth and Madison, Judy Johnson Park on Third and Clayton, Mac Park on Sixth and North Ford Avenue, Father Tucker Park on Ninth and Lincoln, uh, Willon Park on Fourth and, and Parrish Streets. Again, for more information on where those parks are, call us at, uh, five seven six two one four zero. And I do think that's all of the announcements. I think everyone else already touched on everything else. Um, again, uh, just as far as protocol during, protocol during the, uh, during our meetings. I think the concern of several council members is, is the fairness when a point of order is called. If we're going to call point of order on a council member, we have to make sure that we're being fair to all and calling it whenever we do. I have a concern about point of order. Um, I'm always going to listen and I'm always going to, uh, move forward with, I think, however I think is best in the interest of council and our community. I just think that we have to make sure that we're being fair. And if we do have a concern, again, a point of order, that we're calling it every time and not just on certain council members. That's the feedback that I've, that I've been getting. And it's only called, it's not called across the board. It's only called when certain coun- council members do it. Um, do want to wish everyone a happy Father's Day this Sunday. Uh, make sure that we are celebrating our fathers. Uh, make sure we are celebrating our, you know, our uncles and our grandfathers and all of the men in the city of Wilmington in our lives. Make sure that we are celebrating them, not only this weekend, but especially this weekend. And happy Juneteenth to everyone. Looking forward to seeing everyone out and about as we begin to reopen. And just remember, I think Councilmember Dixon touched on it, that we are, we do still have to be safe and socially distanced, uh, from, from one another, but it, it will be good to get out and see some familiar faces. And, uh, with that, I want to thank everyone who tuned in. Please try to join us via Zoom or W I T N as often as you can. We appreciate your engagement and your feedback. So with that, I will accept the motion to adjourn.
They moved.
Second.
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 It's been properly moved a second that we adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And the opposed, motion carried. Take care, everyone. Meeting adjourned.
Sure. Thanks to the staff.